Call us together here. I'm going to open up in the information, so if y'all bow with me, I'll open this up in our opening prayer. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this great day. Lord, just thank you for allowing us all to be here. Lord, just thank you for allowing us to be in a country where we can have open meetings for people to participate and come speak. And Lord, we just ask you to give us a great meeting here tonight, and we just pray everything that's said and done to honor, glorify you tonight, Lord. Lord, we just pray for those in our community and across the country and across the world that is fighting this COVID virus, and we just ask for your healing hand on each of them. And Lord, just be with those that were not able to be here with us tonight, that wish they could be. And Lord, just thank you for allowing us to live in a great community and a great country. And Lord, just thank you all that you do for us, and then we pray. Amen.
Amen.
You'll stand. We'll pledge to the American flag, and then we'll do the Georgia flag after that.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Then our Georgia state flag.
Pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and to the principles for which it stands, wisdom, justice, and moderation.
Thank you all. May be seated. Okay, we'll ask the clerk at this time to call the row to establish a quorum, please.
Commissioner Blakemore.
Present.
Commissioner Askew.
Here.
Chairman Whitfield.
Here.
Commissioner Hord.
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz.
Present.
Okay, gentlemen of the board, you have before you the packet of information that's been prepared by the clerk, and part of that is the minutes from our regular scheduled meeting back on January the 14th. This information is also in the packet of information. There should be some packets out in the foyer. For those of you here tonight, and those of you watching on Facebook or on our YouTube channels, you can find this information on the county website, under the Board of Commissioners, the Meeting and Agenda tabs, you'll be able to find this complete set of documents as well. So at this time, we'll move for the Board of, for a motion to approve the minutes from the January 14th meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Blakemore.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Hord. Any further discussion about the minutes of the prior meeting? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll have to back up here. I've made a mistake already. Sorry about that, guys. The approval of the agenda, I missed that one. Sorry about that. So we'll take a step back here. We do have a public hearing tonight with some action items, and then our new business. So we'll need a motion to approve the agenda this before us here tonight.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz.
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. Any further discussion on the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now to our public hearing. At this time, we do have H.J. Blakemore &amp; Son LLC request a rezone for R2 to I Industrial for property located at Zero Salem Road, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, tax map and parcel number 0-097-017.
I would like to recuse myself from this conflict of interest.
Okay, Mr. Blakemore has requested to be able to recuse himself since he does have a conflict of interest on this particular rezone. So we'll note that for the record. Okay, is there anyone in the audience here tonight that would like to come and speak against this rezone for the Salem Road, Rossville, Georgia, tax map and parcel 0-097-017? Anyone here want to speak in opposition to this tonight? Okay, hearing none, is there anyone here that wants to speak on behalf of this rezone or in favor of this rezone at this time? Anyone that wants to speak in favor of this rezone on Salem Road? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the next item on our agenda. We'll allow Mr. Blakemore to return. The next that we have is Allen and Eugene, Lori and Broderie Ridley request a rezone from R2 to A1 for property located at Zero Dry Creek Road, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, map and parcel 0-498-011. Is anyone here that wants to speak in opposition of this property located at Dry Creek Road, Lafette? Any opposition? Okay, hearing none, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this rezone? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the next public item, public hearing item. Allen and Eugene and Lori Ridley request a rezone from R2 to A1 for property located at Zero Corinth Road, Lafette, Georgia, tax map and parcel 0-498-030C. Anyone wants to speak in opposition of this rezone? Okay, hearing none, anyone wants to speak in favor of this rezone? Okay, we'll move to the next item of the agenda. Allen and Eugene and Lori Ridley request a rezone from R2 to A1 for property located at Zero East Highway 136, Lafette, Georgia, tax map and parcel number 0-497-1-025. Anyone wants to speak in opposition of this parcel? Okay, hearing none, anyone wants to speak in favor of this rezone? Okay, gentlemen of the board, we'll move down to our new business. We do have a consideration for H.J. Blakemore &amp; Son LLC requesting a rezone from R2 to Industrial for property located at Zero Salem Road, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, tax map and parcel number 0-097-17.
I'd like to recuse myself of conflict of interest.
Okay, Commissioner Blakemore, for the record, is asked to recuse himself from this vote, so he's going to exit the table, and we'll note that in the records that he has recused himself from this. So at this time, I'll open this rezone up. We'll ask Michael Haney, who's our new planning and zoning chairman, if he would like to share any comments or information on this that came from the Planning Commission. So, Mr. Haney, if you'd like to go to the podium so we pick you up on the microphone, if there's anything that you would like to add about this, and the floor is yours.
I don't believe there's really anything to add to it other than favorable vote on it to allow the rezone and inform the rank for the commissioners for the time period.
Okay, all right. So we'll open this up to the board. Is there any discussion on this from the board here tonight?
No, sir. I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, sir.
I'd like a motion to accept the consideration and approve the Planning Commission's recommendation for the rezone.
Okay, so Commissioner Askew makes a motion to approve the rezone request. We have a second.
Second.
We do have a second from Commissioner Stoltz at this time. Is there any further discussion from the board?
Aye.
That'd be out of order, I'm sorry. Is there any other discussion from the board?
No, sir.
All in favor of the board members for this rezone, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion is carried to rezone this property to industrial. Okay, Mr. Haney, we have the second rezone at the Zero Dry Creek Road, Lafette, Georgia, tax map and parcel 0-498-011. Is there anything that you'd like to add to that?
Other than the, I believe the existing property was already agricultural, that was purchased and kind of together. Once again, the board reached a decision, a favorable decision recommended to the commissioners for a favorable decision. Sorry, I can't speak to that either.
Okay, so this does come from the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as a favorable to make a recommendation from the board to rezone this. So we have any discussion from the board on this zone, this particular zoning request?
No, sir.
Hearing none, do we have a motion for the rezone?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Commissioner Blakemore's made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Stoltz has made the second. Any further discussion on this rezone request? All right, hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the rezone is approved. Okay, Mr. Haney, the next one on our agenda is the rezone from R2 to A1 for property located at Zero Corinth Road, Lafette, Georgia, tax map and parcel 0-498-030.
This is the same, Planning and Zoning recommended favorable decision on it to rezone it from R2 to A1, recommended to the commissioners for the same.
Okay, so we've heard from the Planning Commission, they are favorable to recommend this to be rezone. Any discussion from the board on this? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve this rezone.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We do have a second from Commissioner Hord. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any members opposed? Hearing none, the rezone is approved. Okay, Mr. Haney, the next one we have is a rezone from R2 to A1 for property located at Zero East Highway 136, Lafette, Georgia, tax map and parcel 0-497-1-025.
Again, the board reached a favorable decision, the rezone from R2 to A1, and recommended board commissioners for approval.
Okay, any further discussion from the board members on this particular rezone request? Hearing none, we'll move for a motion for approval of this rezone?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we do have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore, a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, rezone is approved. Okay, get my paperwork. Okay, next item that we have here is Resolution R-003-21, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint members to the Board of Directors of the Northwest Georgia Joint Development Authority, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas one of the duties delegated to the chairman of the, the chairman of the board is to appoint members to all committees of the board with the approval of the board, whereas the Board of Directors of the Northwest Georgia Joint Development Authority consists of three members appointed from Walker County, and whereas vacancies exist due to the resignation of Robert Wardlaw and the expiration of the term held by Bobby Teems, and whereas Darrell Massey currently serves as the district manager for Food City and is qualified and willing to serve as a representative of the Walker County upon the Board of Directors of the Northwest Georgia Joint Development Authority, and whereas Bobby Teems has provided exceptional representation as a representative of Walker County upon the Board of Directors of the Northwest Georgia Joint Development Authority and desires to continue to serve, whereas Chairman Whitfield submitted the following appointments to serve as representatives of the Walker County, for representatives of Walker County on the Board of Directors of the Northwest Georgia Joint Development Authority as listed, Darrell Massey for the term ending of December 31st of 2022, and Bobby Teems for the term ending December 31st of 2024. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointment of Darrell Massey and Bobby Teems are appointed. I would also like to read the, the letter that was submitted by Robert Wardlaw. This was addressed to the Walker County Board of Commissioners, and it says, "Dear Chairman Whitfield and the Board, it has been my pleasure to work alongside representatives from Catoosa, Chautauqua, Dade, and Walker Counties as we pursue economic prosperity within our communities. I am respectfully tendering my resignation effective January the 28th, 2021. It is my desire to vacate my position on the Board as a representative from Walker County in order to make room for an additional contributor to our efforts. My full support and engagement with the Northwest Georgia Joint Development Authority and the Top of Georgia Economic Development Initiative will continue as a non-Board attendee. Warmest regards, Robert Wardlaw, Executive Director of the Walker County Development Authority." And I think Robert was with us. Oh, there he is, I'm sorry. Thank you for that, Robert.
He's still here.
Okay, thank you for that. So we do have this resolution, and is there any discussion from the board at this time?
No, sir.
Okay, so at this time, we will call for the vote for these two nominations from the chairman here tonight to appoint Darrell Massey for a term ending December 31st of 2022, and Bobby Teems ending of term December 31st, 2024, to the Northwest Georgia Joint Development Authority. So do we have a motion? I guess this would be a motion from the chair, so we need a second for this adoption of this resolution.
I'll second.
So we do have a second from Commissioner Blakemore. Any further discussion from the board on these? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll sign this resolution. Show that as unanimous vote. Okay, we do have a couple of letters here that we will sign and submit. This one's, "Mr. Massey, it's a great pleasure that I appoint you to the Board of Directors of the Northwest Georgia Joint Development Authority. Your new term begins effective immediately and expires on December 31st of 2022. Thank you for your continued support to the citizens of Walker County and your willingness to serve them in this important capacity. If I can provide any assistance, please do not hesitate to contact me." So I'll sign this on behalf of the board. And then also, we have one for Bobby Teems. The only difference in the letters is his, since he was, an expiring term, this just renews his term for four years, and this one would go through December 31st of 2024. Okay, the next item we have on our agenda here is Resolution R-00621, a resolution to appoint a board, a board of the, excuse me, Board of Commissioners Clerk. Sorry, couldn't get that out. So we do have a short resolution here. Is the board ready to move forward with this at this time?
I have looked at the two applications that have come in. Have y'all looked at them as well?
Yes.
And I would recommend that we figure out a way that we can interview these two people. I don't know if we can do that two at a time, and I would recommend that Becky wouldn't be involved with that, that she would be training that individual. I'm not sure how we can do that.
Yeah, two commissioners would be able to meet together to, to speak with someone about a, about a job opening position.
Okay. When did the, when did the applications close online? Is it today?
I don't know if we actually set it to close. If, no, we didn't set it to close, so it is still posted, and we can keep it posted. That's the board's desire.
Okay.
I request this matter be tabled until we can interview the applicants, look over the resumes, and make a decision after that.
Okay.
I agree.
All right, anything else? Okay, so would you like to make that into a motion?
I would, yes, sir. I would like to make a motion that we table Resolution R-00621 based on further discussion, interviews of the applicants, so that a decision can be made on a clerk to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, so we do have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz, and a second by Commissioner Hord to table this until additional people have a chance to apply, and then anyone that's applied can be interviewed in that process. So any further discussion on that? Hearing none? I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Would it be fair to ask the county clerk to set those interviews up and contact us, and we could do them District 3 and 4, 2 and 3, whatever the time, so we can look at that?
Sure, I think that would be feasible, absolutely.
Okay.
Sure. Okay, anything else? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table this Resolution R-00621 until further notice. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries to table, unanimous. All right, the next item that we have is an amendment to the ambulance service agreement between Walker County and CHI Memorial. I'm not necessarily going to read this one. It's pretty, pretty straightforward. I'll give a little bit of narrative and background on this. We entered into a, an agreement back a few months ago for CHI Memorial to provide ambulance service for Walker County. We had a bid process, had many good, very competitive bids. CHI Memorial gave us the best overall value. It will take our ambulance service from four 24/7 ambulances up to five 24/7 ambulances. The only hiccup so far is that so many industry, people in the industry were buying ambulances that we've had a difficult time with them being able to buy and get built five new ambulances. So CHI Memorial is going to be short one ambulance for a few weeks, and so they have asked us if they can rent the ambulance that we have, that we keep in service to keep our license current, and so they have worked this through our legal counsel and their legal counsel, and they've put just a very straightforward amendment to the existing contract. And basically, what we're doing here, I'll read this portion here at the bottom, it says, "Commencement time of the contract on February 1, 2021 shall be at 7:00 a.m. instead of 12:00 a.m. This time period can, coincides with standard labor shift," so that's an additional change. It was going to start at 7:00 a.m., this will change to 12:00 a.m. "The following new selects, sections shall be added to the contract. Lease agreement, the county agrees to allow contractor to lease the ambulance to contract until the contractor's ambulance is ready for service. Contractor anticipates that the ambulance will be available for operations within four to six weeks after the February 1, 2021. Contractors shall pay the county a sum of 10 cents per mile that the contractor operates the ambulance during the lease period. Contractors shall provide the county with an executed affidavit which sets forth the beginning and ending odometer readings, and the ambulance is driven during each month. Said affidavit and the amount of payment shall be delivered to the county commissioner's office no later than 10 days following the end of the month. Contractors shall be responsible for all maintenance, repairs, gas, oil, and other operational cost of the ambulance during the entire lease period. Contractors shall be responsible for providing all medical supplies on the ambulance. Contractors shall staff and operate the ambulance in the same manner as the contractor's ambulance is set forth in the contract. Contractors responsible for maintaining all insurance on the ambulance and provide in the section of the contract titled minimum insurance requirement. The provision of the section of the contract titles and indemnification shall apply to the use of the ambulance. Contractors shall add appropriate signage to the outside of the ambulance in order to identify that it is being operated by the contractor. The parties acknowledge that certain county signage is required to be maintained for registration and compliance purpose. Contractors and the county shall agree in advance as to the type and location of contractor signage. Contractors shall remove the signage at the end of the lease period. Contractors shall be responsible for any damage to the ambulance as a result of the removal of the contractor's signage. Contractors shall also be responsible for the cost of any permits required as a result of its operating of the ambulance. All other provisions of the contracts that are not in conflict with the provision of this amendment are applicable to the contractor's use of the ambulance. If there is a conflict between the provisions of the amendment and the contract, then the provisions of this amendment shall, shall control, and has a place to be signed by us here tonight, and also attested by the clerk, and then we will send this to CHI Memorial, and they have agreed with the language and the terms and conditions of this contract, and they worked this directly with our legal staff. So is there any questions, comments from the board?
I just want to make sure, in hearing that, and Mr. Gottlieb, we're, we're absolutely have no liability in this lease. In other words, if there's anything that happens with this equipment while it's under lease for them, the Walker County government is totally clear of any liabilities.
That is correct. They are responsible for maintaining insurance, and they also separately sign an indemnification agreement, which means that if for any reason the county is, would be responsible for anything, whether it be property damage or personal entry, that the CHI Memorial will be totally responsible. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, at this time, we'd like to call for a motion to approve this amendment or addendum to the CHI Memorial contract.
Make a motion, do we approve it?
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hord. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimous to execute this agreement. Okay, the next item that we have is an intergovernmental agreement for the conduct of the elections between Walker County Board of Elections and a registration in Walker County, Georgia, and the city of Chickamauga. We have executed very similar agreements in the past with the city of Lafette and also the city of Rossville to manage, conduct the elections of our local cities to be performed by the Walker County Board of Elections, and so this is a similar documentation that has already been vetted by our Board of Elections and has been signed by the chairman and also the elections manager, and was negotiated between them and the city of Chickamauga and has been approved on the 12th, excuse me, November, excuse, can you get it up? December 17th of 2020 by the city of Chickamauga. Mayor and council, it's been signed by the mayor and attested by their clerk, and it gives Exhibit A of a schedule of a budget for the election's cost. This may vary a little bit. As you see, there's a couple of things that have an asterisk beside them that are estimated cost, but it was actually, you know, would be following this price sheet with any adjustments of additional costs that may be incurred. And so at this time, the city of Chickamauga and our Walker County Board of Elections is asking for this body, being the Board of Commissioners, to make the final approval of this document to allow them to manage the elections for the city of Chickamauga. So is there any questions from the board on this? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this agreement?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? All right, hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll sign this document to give final approval to this. I think they have an election coming up actually in March. Is that so? Okay, so we'll give this whole document to clerk to attest. Okay, the next item on our agenda, we do have an executive session listed. Do we have a motion to, of the board to go into the executive session?
Motion to go into the executive session.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz to go into executive session. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second by Commissioner Askew. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this time, we will take a recess. You're welcome to stay here in the building, and once we finish the executive session, we we will be back out and take any further...
Commissioner, chair person, it may have been that I just couldn't understand.
Okay, hold on, let's get order here just a second. Hold on a minute.
Commissioner Stoltz may have said it, and I may not have been able to hear him because of the mask. We usually need to state the reason for going into executive. Did you say that, and I just didn't hear it, sir?
To discuss personnel issues.
Okay, great. I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure we had it on record.
Make sure the record states it's clear that we're going into executive session to discuss a personnel matter. So we'll be back shortly.
Hi, I'm Joe Leggie, Public Relations Director for Walker County Government. The board has just entered executive session. This is a process that allows elected officials to discuss a specific, sensitive topic behind closed doors. These are topics that are exempt from the Georgia Open Meetings Act. Executive session topics must fall into one of three categories: litigation, real estate, or personnel matters. In terms of litigation, the need may arise for the board to consult with a county attorney on pending or potential lawsuits, settlements, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought by or against Walker County Government, its officers, or employees. Real estate covers discussions regarding the future purchase or acquisition, disposal, or lease of property. Personnel matters would cover the discussion or deliberation on the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal of a Walker County government officer or employee. Now, if a vote is needed pertaining to an issue discussed in the executive session, it must be taken in an open meeting, otherwise it is not binding. There's no timetable set for an executive session. It could last five minutes or even five hours. Because we don't know how long it will be before the board resumes the regular meeting, we will end this live stream shortly and start a new feed when the executive session concludes. Now make sure that you turn on your notifications for the Walker County Government Facebook page, so you're alerted when the meeting resumes. Under your follow settings for this page, scroll down to the notifications, then select live video and click on All Notifications. Thanks for watching, and we'll be back in a bit.